Recording in progress.
You know, it works. You've been nice for four years. You've been nice for four years. It's remarkable.
That is remarkable.
Sean.
Want to lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
Okay, we're going to get started. Welcome everyone to the November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two regular city council meeting. I'd like to ask the city clerk at this point to call the roll.
Counselor Runyon.
Here.
Counselor Randall.
Present.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Present.
Counselor Long.
Present.
Mayor Mays.
Present.
And Counselor Richardson is absent.
And Counselor McLaughlin is on Zoom tonight.
That's right.
Okay, item three is the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to ask Counselor Rod Runyon to please lead us in the pledge.
If you're able to stand, please do so. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the states of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible.
Thank you. Item four is approval of the agenda. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I like the looks of it.
Is that a motion?
Okay.
Okay.
I second it.
It's been moved by Counselor Runyon and seconded by Counselor Randall to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand. Motion carries. Item five is presentations and proclamations. Item five A is the Dow's disposal rate increase. And is, I know Mr. Winterbottom's here. Is he going to get up and? Come on up. Thank you. Please identify yourself and give your address.
Winterbottom, Dow disposal.
He's talking to the microphone.
Jim Winterbottom, the Dow's disposal. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thanks for your time this evening. I am here with the proposed rate increases for the year two thousand twenty-three residential and commercial services here in the city of the DOWs. For solid waste collection services. Our industry continues to struggle with inflated costs in several areas of our business. Addition to rising costs are the added expense of the recycle markets recently crashing. I have a few examples of both. In your packet, I believe you have a letter that outlines how the CPI is calculated in our area. And we are asking for eighty-five percent CPI. Which is an increase of seven point three seven percent. CPI is based off of eight point six seven percent. Eighty-five percent gets us to seven point three seven. When it comes to our expenses. Our wages are up seventeen percent over year. Diesel exhaust fluid, which is one of the components that our trucks need to burn diesel efficiently and cleanly.
Seventeen percent.
Forty-five percent. Motor oil is up forty-eight percent. Fuel up fifty-four percent. Hydraulic oil is up fifty-two percent. And the list goes on. In addition to the landfill being up seven point three seven percent. They've already got approval from Wasco County. The tip fee and the pass-through hazardous household waste fee taking back January one of two thousand twenty-three. Mentioned the recycle markets earlier. September of two thousand twenty-one, O-Mingle mix, which is the ten paper and plastic we collect curbside. And folks drop off at the transfer station, we were getting eight dollars a ton. So after we collect it, reload it, transport it to Vancouver or Portland. And a trailer lease as well as transportation, we're getting eighty dollars load of material. Not even covering the cost. This September. Same material, ninety-eight dollars a ton charge. Or again, four hundred dollar transportation, trailer lease, all compounds on top of that. Instead of receiving eight dollars a ton or eighty dollars a load, now paying for a thousand dollars alone. Birdboard, year ago, hundred and thirty-five dollars a ton. It paid me when I rolled across the scale with a twelve to thirteen ton load. After collecting it curbside, reloading it as well. A zero. Doesn't make a lot of sense to collect things at a zero value, let alone a negative value. That's what we're having to do in today's current economy. Oh. Kind of the outlook on some of the expenses that we're facing. We look at how this impacts our rate payers, which we're very conscious of. It's not, we take this lightly by any means. Yeah, thirty-two gallon customer here in the DOWs. Currently, he's paying nineteen dollars and thirty-six cents a month. Increase would be a dollar forty-three per month, taking it to twenty dollars and seventy-nine cents a month. A increase of thirty-three cents per pickup. Ninety gallon roll cart, we provide the customer currently at twenty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. It would be going to thirty dollars and sixty-two cents per month. An increase of forty-nine cents per pickup. Looking at the same. Same numbers on a yard and a half dumpster or container that you would see at a convenience store or restaurant. Currently, for once a month, excuse me, once a week pickup, paying one oh three fifty-nine. It would see an increase of seven dollars and sixty-three cents per month. Taking it to one eleven twenty-two. Increase of a dollar seventy-six. If council has any questions, I would be happy to do my best to answer them.
Questions for Mr. Winterbottom. Matthew, are, this is just a discussion, is that correct? And the plan is to actually consider this next, at our next meeting?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And in terms of process, we wanted to have Mr. Winterbottom here this evening to give this presentation. And hear any questions or comments that the council may have. We'll have this listed on our agenda for December as an action item for consideration. Along with the agenda staff report incorporating some of this discussion here this evening. And any questions or direction or inquiries that the council has.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Counselor Long.
Yeah, thanks. Um, so when I was looking through your stuff, I couldn't, I couldn't tell. It's probably in Harry. Provide a lot of information. I appreciate that. Businesses, are they like residential where they can provide their own dumpster can?
So there's. We provide a dumpster for the commercial accounts which they can rent from us. Some customers have been grandfathered in that have owned their dumpsters for years.
But, but new ones can't necessarily. But some people have to pay rent. They don't, if they're new, they don't have the option of, it's only the people who are grandfathered in.
Correct.
So it's not just the pickup fee, it's also the rental fee. And how much is the rental? Oh, sorry.
Have to look.
Okay.
I think it's thirty, I think it's thirty-five dollars a month.
Okay.
So what we did, we broke it out rather than listing it with the rent being inclusive. We wanted to show the customer what they're actually paying, services they're paying.
Okay, okay, great. And. I think that's it for now. Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Winterbottom?
Just want to say I appreciate the detail that you put into this. It's, it could, it could be much more. Based on what's going on price-wise for fuel in our country. Thank you.
Anybody else? Maybe when you come back in December, you could. Detail some of the contributions you make to the community. I know that you really helped out with the mural fest, which I personally appreciate. Lot of, some free service there for the, for the community. So maybe you could bring that with you next time you come.
We normally don't fly our own flag, but if you ask, I'll bring it.
I'm asking. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, item five A is the Mid-Columbia Houseless Collaborative Strategic Plan. Brought to you by Mid-Columbia Community Action, I believe, who is here. And is Mr. LaPointe going to be addressing the city council? Or Ms. Naromar from the Washington side of the river?
Good evening, Mayor Mays, members of the council. This is Kenny LaPointe, Executive Director. Of Mid-Columbia Community Action Council. And actually, Kelly Horvath, our Director of the Office of Housing Stabilization, will kick us off here with this presentation.
Great. Hello, Ms. Horvath. Please proceed. Please identify yourself with your title and organization.
Yes, I'm Kelly Horvath, and I'm the Director of the Office of Housing Stabilization at Mid-Columbia Community Action Council. And I'll let our other folks introduce themselves as well. So I'll hand it off to Leslie.
Lee Naromar, and I am the Executive Director of Washington Gorge Action Programs, which is the Community Action Agency for Clickatatt and Skamania Counties.
Thank you.
And then I will just also mention that in addition to myself, Wesley and Kenny, we have Sarah Kellums, who is the new. Development and Engagement Coordinator at Mid-Columbia Community Action Council, and will be helping us to. Bring in the resources necessary to implement this plan, both in the short and long term. And she also helped participate in the creation of this plan and consulted on that. And then we also have Jennifer Paletto, who is the Associate Director at AGAP. So they'll be listening in, and Kenny, Wesley and I will be presenting. So I will go ahead and share my screen here. I'll let Kenny take it away.
Thanks, Kelly. So I know that we've had a few discussions with the city council as well as the county commissions in the area, but I'm just going to give a little bit. Of a reminder of why we're here, the sort of backdrop on the creation of this strategic plan. So about a little over a year ago, Mid-Columbia Community Action Council was given thirty-five thousand dollars from Providence Health Systems to develop. A regional strategic plan around addressing houselessness. And that regional strategic plan extends from, from Hood River, Wasco, Sherman Counties. Over to Clickatatt and Skamania Counties, which is, you know, why Leslie and Jennifer are here with us today. This is the first strategic plan. Of this nature that has considered both sides of the gorge. We, along with Providence Health Systems, felt like it was very important. That we encapsulated the work that was being done on both sides because clients in the region who are being served by the systems. Do not really see boundaries between counties and cities and states. So we felt like it was very important that we were doing this work together, that we were aligning our resources together. And that we were creating joint policy statements that would help us address homelessness in the best possible way in the region. So. We collaborated with, with Leslie and Washington Gorge Action Programs, as well as many other partners throughout the region to develop this strategic plan. We began earlier this year in the development process, and this presentation is really a culmination of that work that's been done. We have released the strategic plan a few weeks back, which we'll go into here in the presentation. And the, the plan was also ratified by an advisory board on the Oregon side. The House Bill forty-one twenty-three Advisory Board, which I think you all have heard about previously. There is an MOU on the Oregon side of the river between Hood River County, Wasco County, Sherman County, the city of the DOWs, and the city of Hood River. For the implementation of this plan. And I'll just remind folks that that house bill also came with dollars for the implementation of the plan. So we received. One million dollars, five hundred thousand dollars a year for the next two years to set up an office of housing stabilization, which Kelly is the Director of. And lives within MCAC. And we also, as Kelly mentioned, have hired Sarah Kellums to help us. Do some resource development so we can implement the plan over the next five years. So with that, I'll kick it over, kick it back over to Kelly.
Okay, thanks for that intro, Kenny. There we go. Uh, do you want to speak to this anymore, Kenny, or just kind of move forward?
No, I mean, I'll just say, we all know why, why we're here and why we have a, a plan to address houselessness. Obviously. Housing insecurity, housing instability, houselessness throughout Oregon, Washington, throughout the country has really increased over the last decade or so. Rents are rising. Really low housing inventory. Our, our region has definitely been impacted by the vacation rental market. Lots of investors buying up homes. Which has caused increases in houselessness. I believe we had a seventy percent increase. In houselessness in our last point in time count in Wasco County alone. So the increase in houselessness led us to, you know. Come together and develop a strategic plan for how we're going to address it.
And Kenny mentioned that we worked with a wide variety of partners to create the Houseless Collaborative in the first place. And then to write the strategic plan that we'll be sharing with you today. So. This is just a sampling on this page, and I'll show you some more partners on the next page of the types of. Entities that we involved in the creation of the collaborative and in the strategic planning process. And we do plan to engage these partners moving forward as we move into the implementation phase. Of the strategic plan over the next five years. So our goal is that this plan does not sit on a shelf and collect dust. But that we were actively working with partners and thinking about how to. Support various folks when they're leading on particular components of the plan, or also create work groups and build, you know. New partnerships as needed to tackle other areas of the plan. And as Kenny mentioned, key partners in this plan are those forty-one twenty-three partner governments on the Oregon side. And who have adopted this as their five-year strategic plan under House Bill forty-one twenty-three as well.
This was the vision of our group, and when we formed the group, we really wanted to make sure that we included the voices of people who have lived experience. And they were very instrumental in helping us come up with this vision. We really tried to follow the nothing about us, without us model, because we know. That the people who have experienced it are going to be able to have the best input on what it's like and how we can best solve it. So our revision is the Mid-Columbia Houseless Collaborative envisions a region with equitable opportunities and support. Where everyone who needs stable housing can find and afford it, especially communities who have faced disproportionate barriers to housing. So that everyone can achieve the best quality of life possible. Through collaboration and advocacy, we work to reduce houselessness in the gorge by expanding housing capacity. And ensuring supportive services are provided in culturally affirming ways that uphold human dignity. And that last piece right there, upholding human dignity, we firmly believe that everyone deserves the dignity that comes with having a roof over their heads. With being able to prepare food, with being able to shower, with being able to be safe at night. So that was something that was really important to us as we worked through creating this plan and listened to the people who had lived experience. Our values are listed here, and I'm not going to read all of these out loud, but I did just want to highlight some of the things that. Really were important to us, first and foremost being compassion and humanity. We believe that, like I said, everyone deserves to have a home. Everyone deserves to have that dignity that comes with having a home. And we really wanted to be sure that we were recognizing the fellow humanity that we all share. We also really value collaboration and partnership. That's why you see all of us here tonight. As Kenny mentioned, this is the first time that we've had an effort that was by state. And I think that's so important that we. Look at the gorge as a region and not as one side of the gorge and the other side of the gorge. Advocacy, again, that's why we're here tonight. We're here to advocate for. Things to get done. As Kelly mentioned, this is a living document, and so this is something that we're going to be talking about consistently. We're going to be going around to all of our local governments, and we really want to make sure that people know how to advocate. We held, earlier in the year, we held some roundtables where we focused on the issue of housing and then really teaching our community members how to advocate. Because we know that oftentimes, when something comes up, when there's work to be done, we know that a lot of you don't hear from the people who are in support of. You often hear from the people who are against something. And so we really want to be sure that we can be the voices. We can help people understand. How they can go out and be that voice too. We also value diversity, equity, and lived experience. As I mentioned, we did have people with lived experience who participated throughout the planning process. And that was really important to us. And then lastly, tenacity and perseverance, because we know that this is an ongoing struggle. This is not something that we got into overnight, and it's not something that we're going to get out of overnight. So. We know that we're in it for the long haul, and we are going to get it done.
And then Leslie mentioned the commitment to diversity, equity, and lived experience. So. I again, won't read this whole statement to you all, but I will highlight that the collaborative, you know, as they were coming up with. The mission and vision and values also felt like it was important to publish, publish an equity statement that really. Showed our values and also held us accountable as a collaborative to the ways that we want to live out our equity values. So the action steps associated with that equity statement are focused on finding and addressing the root causes of inequity, both in our work and in our own lives. Improving the broader housing systems where personal identities tend to predict inequitable outcomes. Using data to drive decisions and focus resources so that we can actually make equity a practice, not just a concept. And then including the voices of people who are or have been houseless with an emphasis on communities of color. So that's the kind of guiding set of principles and equity values that we really wanted to make sure we shine a light on.
Our four key goal areas were shelter, services, housing, and advocacy. And I believe that you all received a summary of the strategic plan, and I would highly encourage you to please look over these pieces. I, I'm going to toot our own horn here. I think it's a fabulous document. It really is interesting. I think that we had some really talented people at the table putting it together. So that first key area is shelter. We definitely know that we need to increase the shelter beds that are available throughout our region. But we also know that providing people with shelter is just a temporary solution. And so. We need to be able to have long-term housing solutions for them to turn to after they get into the shelter. We want to make services that are one stop. And also coordinate our efforts across the region so that when people come in and they're seeking services, they're going to receive the same thing. No matter where they go, they're going to have access to the same services as everyone else, no matter which office they go into. Again, with housing, we know that we really need to increase the housing stock, and that's true across the region. That's. True through all classes, all socioeconomic classes. You know, we know that we are really falling behind when it comes to increasing our housing stock. I just read a report, I believe Washington State was ranked seventh worst. And I, I don't want to point that out because we're, we're not, we're bad. But I just think that that's definitely something that we need to be aware of, and that's definitely something that we can all work to change. And that brings me back to advocacy. That's something that we can all advocate to change. And to try to move our communities forward so that everybody has a safe place to live. So these were our strategic priorities. And as I mentioned, we want. We do something currently called coordinated entry, which means that when people come into an office, they are. Receiving exactly the same services no matter where they go. And so that's something that we want to better coordinate across the region. We know that we need to put better systems into place to help people when they come into our offices. And we want to make sure that we have enough funding to provide the shelter that's needed. And also to take care of our employees. So that's something else that we're really working on advocating for is making sure. That the people who are working are able to receive a living wage, that they themselves don't have to worry about housing insecurity as well. And then, of course, making sure that as we move people into shelter, that we're able to move them out just as quickly and make sure that we're moving them into permanent solutions.
The next goal area is around services. So we can provide shelter, housing. And we can do the advocacy work, but we also need services to be aligned with, with both shelter and housing. Having services aligned helps people be successful in their living environments, whether it is in shelter, whether, whether it is in housing. I know this is something that you all have seen as we've introduced the Navigation Center project, where we bring multiple service providers together. In a shelter environment. But this is something we really need to make sure that we're prioritizing aligning behavioral health. Substance use disorder services, aligning services for folks coming out of incarceration so we can get them housing and employed once again. So this is something that is very critical for people's success in the future. We can't simply just provide shelter or just provide housing. We know we need to also add. Services on there. So we worked in the strategic planning process. We had Mid-Columbia Center for Living. We had law enforcement involved in the planning process. We had. Physical health. We had physical health services from One Community Health, Providence, um, MCMC, all involved in the development of this strategic plan because we know service alignment will be cr- critical to its success.
Then housing, as you all know, is a really significant piece of the puzzle. So in our housing goal area, the key strategic priorities that we wanted to commit to as a collaborative include making it easier to build housing that low income households can afford. And the collaborative did agree to, uh, publicizing a specific number of units that they want to strive to support the creation of within our region over the next five years. So as you can see here, um, by looking at various projects that are either in the pipeline or coming online soon, uh, the collaborative agreed that they wanted to kind of come around and support those projects as needed to help push them across the finish line, knowing that, uh, most of them are not a done deal yet. We also talked a lot about the need to preserve the region's existing supply of affordable housing. So whether there are, you know, subsidies that are expiring tax credits, um, or there are opportunities to preserve mobile home parks that are otherwise going to be purchased. And, um, rent is going to go way up for the residents there. We want to look for opportunities and take action to make good use of those opportunities to preserve existing affordable housing before it disappears, um, any further. And then we also want to make sure that as new housing is being, uh, brought online, that we're being really intentional and working with culturally specific providers to support people of color and other underserved populations to access that housing. And then, just like we're doing now, um, in the context of our strategic plan, when it comes to the housing needs for our region, we do have a goal as a collaborative of helping both community leaders and the public understand the need for more affordable and accessible housing.
So to do that, um, we are going to explain the need for our work to build community support. So that's why we're here tonight. We want to reach out not only to our locally elected officials, but to our communities and to make sure that they understand the issues and what they can do to help out. We're also going to use data. Um, you know, there are a lot of myths that go with people who are houseless. And we want to make sure that people understand that everyone deserves to have a safe place to live. And the shortage that we're currently facing in our region is something that affects all of us. And we might not even realize that, but we live in a very desirable area. And so when you think about the people who work in the restaurants that you love and the people who work in the breweries or our teachers, um, this is something that affects everyone in our community. And so it's something that we all need to be aware of and working to change. And then lastly, we're going to advocate for funding and policies that help us make real progress on these issues. And so again, that's why we're here tonight. Um, we definitely do pay attention as things move through the legislature. And we're not allowed to lobby, but we are allowed to advocate. And so we do advocate at every opportunity to try to bring more funding into our regions.
So when it comes to implementation, um, like I said, we consider this to be a living document. And right now we are in the process of standing up work groups to act on these goal areas um, and strategic priorities that we've outlined for you. We also are working to fully staff the Mid Columbia Office of Housing Stabilization and develop and execute work plans for the staff members therein. So like I mentioned, we recently hired Sarah Kellums as our full-time, uh, development and engagement coordinator. And that, uh, will help us achieve several goals outlined in the strategic plan related to longer-term fundraising to support, um, houseless services in our region and the goals that we've outlined here. Uh, coordinating work with relevant partner organizations of governments is obviously a key part of our implementation. And we're excited to be presenting this plan to you all tonight so we can continue partnering closely with the city of the DOWS on our priorities here. And then we also pr- plan to provide quarterly updates, uh, to both members of the Houseless Collaborative as well as our House Bill forty one twenty three advisory board members. Uh, and we're actually going to link those reports to goals in the strategic plan so that we can hold ourselves accountable uh, to those concrete action steps. And then finally, on an annual basis, we will be collecting listening sessions to get feedback about headway made on the plan and equity commitments. And then we'll make adjustments if needed. Um, we know that there will be a lot of things that change even within, um, a year. And we want to make sure that our, our plan is being responsive to that. So those are the implementation plans as we move forward.
So, um, I couldn't ignore this opportunity to provide you, um, an update on the Navigation Center, which I think you all are aware of. Um, but we are still on track to open the Navigation Center in twenty twenty three. Um, we were hoping to break ground this month, but it is now too cold to break ground. So, um, we'll probably be doing a groundbreaking event in the early spring of twenty three when we can actually, um, stick shovels in the ground because it's not too cold. Um, so we will definitely make sure that the council is invited to that. And Kelly, can you go to that next slide so we can give an updated image of the center? I think maybe the last time we were here, I was here, um, we had a concept drawing. Now this is more um, like what we're, we're really looking at. Um, as you can see, we have the shelter on the backside. We are planning on painting the shelter units. So we've been talking with Palace Shelter about paint that works on those to just make it a little bit more lively. Um, I think since I last presented too, we also, um, are expecting to get some congressionally delegated spending that would allow us to move these palace shelters off the site and convert them to stick-built tiny homes um, in partnership with the Community Colleges Construction Trades Program. So the, the community college would actually build these tiny homes and then we would put them on the site. Um, and we would plan to utilize the palace shelter units for, um, emergency housing. Should we, when we have our next, um, emergency in the region, whether that's wildfires or flooding or whatever it might be. Um, I know the council also approved assisting the Columbia Community App, Action with an application for the CREP, um, the Community Resiliency Energy Program through the Oregon Department of Energy. That will allow us to put a full solar array, as you see on this building. It will allow us to put that full solar away, array and battery resiliency, um, on the building. Uh, so we can be an energy resiliency project. So if the grid goes down, folks could come and utilize our center for cooling, for warming, um, whatever it might be, just the general public could use it for that purpose. So that's, that's an update, update on the Navigation Center. And again, I'll, I'll update you when we have a groundbreaking set and make sure that the entire, um, council is invited to that. And the last thing I wanted to update you on, um, is Project Turnkey two point oh. Um, Project Turnkey one point oh was a program that was funded by the Oregon Legislature to allow communities to purchase hotels and motels for use as shelter or transitional housing. It was really fifty percent of the funds in round one were prioritized for wildfire impacted communities. And fifty seven, fifty percent were really used for areas, um, that wanted to provide shelter for folks experiencing impacts from COVID nineteen. So really the non-congregate sheltering model similar, similar to the Palace Shelter site. Um, but you know, a better environment at a hotel or motel. Well, the second round of Project Turnkey came out, um, earlier this summer, um, we applied. And we were one of the twelve regions that were selected to participate in Project Turnkey two point oh. Um, we are in active conversations with the seller of a hotel in the region and we'll continue to update folks on that, but that would potent- potentially bring up to fifty four um, new, we're calling it transitional housing or transitional shelter units to the region. Um, one of the things that many folks know is we do not have family shelter in our region. So this project would allow us to add family shelter units in partnership with entities like the Nextdoor and the Oregon Human Development Corporation. So we'll continue to update you on these bigger projects as they're going to bring um, significant increases in shelter and transitional housing to the region, which I will also say is in alignment with the Mid Columbia House, Houseless Collaborative Strategic Plan and some of the goals that were in there. Um, so that it is progress in the plan that is already being made. And I think that's it. So we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. LaPointe? Or Ms. Morvath or Ms. Naromar, Nar- Naromar? Counselor Long?
So we have our, uh, city planning meeting coming up for council. And I'm just wondering, uh, have there been specific strategies or policies that have been identified in their plan that we will be discussing and possibly including in our plan since we're a participant? And we've signed a memorandum of understanding?
Um, that may be an answer I'd have to get back to you on more specifically. I don't have anything off the cuff from my seat that I could point to unless Mr. Chandler has anything. But we can certainly review that a bit more closely and get back to you on it.
I guess I'm just wondering, you know, they've gone to the trouble of creating this five-year strategy and, um, we're going to be discussing what's important to the city. And, um, so it'd be nice if we were able to discuss what, you wanna what's already being talked about being done rather than coming up and reinventing the wheel, so to speak. Because I see this as an opportunity, um, to further solidify collaboration. Um, they're looking for funding and, um, changes in policies. And obviously the city handles some of those policies, not just the legislature.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. I'll look into that and speak with our, uh, new community development director and we can get back to you. Thanks.
Anybody else? Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much, uh, everybody for coming and, and making a presentation is very informative and we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you so much.
Okay, audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject which does not later appear on the agenda. Up to five minutes per person will be allowed. Citizens are encouraged to ask questions with the understanding that the city can either answer the question tonight or refer that question to the appropriate staff member who will get back to you within a reasonable amount of time. If a response by the city is requested, the speaker will be referred to the city, city manager for further action. The issue may appear on a future meeting agenda for city council consideration. Oh, Mr. Baker has spoke. I guess you have the floor. Are you, did you expect to, um, talk for more than five minutes? Great. Please proceed. Please identify yourself and.
Good evening. I'm Scott Baker. I'm the executive director for Northern Wasco County Park and Recreation District. And I'm, um, your amazing council. I'm, I'm here to share with you and celebrate the progress that we've made as partners on the rehabilitation of Serosis Park. Um, with your help, as well as help from the county, we were able to hire a qualified local construction company, Crestline Construction, to, um, help us rehabilitate the crown jewel of our park system. Um, this one point one million dollar project, um, is nearing completion. We have all of the earthwork complete, all of the underground irrigation installed, including irrigation to serve future phases of this project. It's all in install. And we have, uh, grass seed down and up and trees planted. And we've really laid the infrastructure, um, work, that infrastructure work is complete, which will allow us to continue to plant, uh, this coming spring of twenty twenty three. And as well as just, um, not getting our own way for future development of the park. And for instance, what you might see a large gravel pad out there. If you've been to Serosis, it served as a staging area for the construction out effort. That pad is the dimensions and locations of our future basketball court. So that four-inch gravel will be repurposed as the foundation for that next phase. We are currently, um, wrapping up what we can do work-wise this year. Um, it, we have a pump on backwater. Our current pump works. Um, and we were able to use that to get the irrigation tested and installed and make sure that everything's working properly. But we're investing in a higher efficiency motor and pump and decoders and controllers that will save energy and conserve water going forward. And those will be installed this spring. So we have a few punchless items left to do, but we're substantially complete on this project. Um, if there's anybody who hasn't had a chance to get up and take a lap around Serosis, since the trees go in, I highly encourage you to do so. I think you'll be really pleased with the progress that we've made. It's a beautiful park again, and it will become an even more beautiful park in the spring when that grass really fills in and grows in and, and gets lush. Got a nice swale on the earthwork that was done with the grading equipment and it just creates a really nice place to picnic, fly a kite, throw a ball, also frisbee around. The disc golf course will go back to eighteen holes in the spring. We really want that over winter time to make sure that that grass is robust enough to really take the, in- increased foot traffic we ex- we expect from creating such a beautiful park. But that, I'll, I'll answer, happy to answer any questions. Other than that, I just wanted to really thank you. We could not, this community could not have done it without the help of the city and the county. And, and passing on those federal funds, it was really, really a team Dallas approach. And I think it, it resulted in a fantastic, um, first phase.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Baker? Counselor Runyon?
Talked to Scott before the meeting. I was encouraged to go up by the park. If anybody here has not gone by Serosis Park from when it was dirt and rock everywhere, it is green, it is beautiful and your total mindset changes immediately. They've done a tremendous job up there and, and more to come. And I, I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments? I was there today and, um, I agree with Counsel Runyon. It looks great. I just got three, um, quick questions. Do you know how many new trees have planted?
Um, there's a this phase, it was just about thirty-two new trees. And, um, we have about another thirty to come in the spring. And you'll see any of the stakes that you see with green ribbon on those, that's a future tree site. So that has a deep root irrigation bubbler installed. And we are really shooting for one and a half to two-inch caliper trees, um, which look small, but grow faster than larger trees when they're transplanted. So we're just a few years away from those trees really taking off.
And you mentioned, uh, the budget for the pro- the project is of one point one million. I know you've got four hundred thousand from us. Is that correct?
That's as well as four hundred thousand from the Wasco County and then three hundred thousand from Park District Funds.
Okay. And then finally, um, you mentioned the basketball court. Is that what's the north, in the northeast corner of the park? Is that what you were talking about?
Correct. Um, near the, close to the college. We thought it would be, for one, it's the most level part of Serosis Park. So it required less earthwork to put the basketball court there. And with the dorms at the college, we anticipate that we'll have, um, you know, Serosis will become the backyard where the students living in there. And so we wanted to put some amenities closer to the college campus.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Long?
All right, that, that's great. That made me think of something. So obviously, uh, you used to be on urban renewal. And so obviously we are looking at fixing our tree problem downtown. Do you think any of the research that you did, um, for Serosis Park? Because obviously you did a lot of research. At the end of that would be relevant or be worth us taking a look at the solutions you came up with?
Yeah. So, so street trees for this area. Um, yeah, I can send you a list of some recommendations. It is something that we looked into, um, when we used to take care of those trees. We just needed to get clear about the goals of the trees and the goals of the business owners and make sure that those are in alignment. You know, and consider in some areas maybe doing some lower plantings or some flower planting beds instead would not hide signs or create problems for business owners or perceived problems for businesses.
Yeah, just when you said that deep well bubble, I was like, oh, I wonder what else he uncovered that we might think about.
Absolutely. And, and you know, there's so many ways to approach that problem. And you know, the same way that you make business owner, we, um, have business owners uh, remove snow from their sidewalks and take care of the right of way in front of their businesses. Putting the onus on those businesses to water those trees would just be one or two per business would be another way to tackle that problem. Um, because at this stage, put in those deep water, um, wells would require quite a bit of, uh, construction work along. I can. Because at this stage, put in those deep water wells would require quite a bit of construction work along second.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
One more thing. And this is not a blind side because I talked to you a little bit about the about this issue before the meeting. At the Veterans Memorial Committee meeting today, we were talking about the cameras and that sort of thing. And for those that don't know, the cameras that were there had no ability to record anything anyway. So they're basically, it's what you see at that moment. And then the cameras have malfunctioned and different things that look at the memorial as well as the park. But with all the improvements going on, I'm hoping that as we move forward with camera selection and more importantly, would you explain to us about the reason why maybe that's not moved so quickly because we need something else called bandwidth?
Right. So we have, we have fiber at the park. Q life brings fiber up to the water tank area. We would need to get that fiber over to perhaps like the old restroom or standalone business building that could house a base unit to have enough range for the cameras to give a high enough resolution that the image that they collect and store is usable for prosecution or just other purposes. And so that is, that is something that we can, we can work with Q life on. And we're going to be working with the PUD to do some trenching. And if there's nothing that underground, some of the utility lines as we redevelop the park, we're striving to underground utilities where possible. And if there's there's some technical questions about whether we can put water and power and fiber into one trench, but if we could, that would be a great opportunity. Other than that, you know, our long term security solutions for Sarosis Park is to create some onsite camp host housing up near the water tower. And so we, as part of our long term plan, hope to put either a tiny home or some gravel and stub out to allow, you know, a camp host similar to that they have in state parks that could you know, put a fifth wheel up there, spend some time, open up our restrooms and kind of be a presence in the park. We wouldn't require them or expect them to do any security enforcement, but they would have eyes on the park and could you know, could alert the Dallas City Police when there's problem.
The memorial committee for one group would like to see cameras, not just on the memorial itself, but looking backwards in to backwards in our view, south to the park main park itself, because vandalism to the park, which will happen anytime you fix something nice. Someone feels like they have to change the course. So having good cameras up there, it's worth the wait if we can do it correctly.
Yes, I agree. If there, you know, we, the park district doesn't have access to the cameras that are up there now. But I'm moving forward as we go to a better system and a centralized monitoring system, I think that's something that we would definitely support.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Scott, thanks very much. Appreciate the update. Is there anyone else who would like to address the city council for up to five minutes?
I would.
Can you wait just? Yeah, but can you wait just a minute? We have one one ahead of you. Okay?
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is Lisa with the Dallas Area Chamber. I just have some reminders to give to you. But first I want to say a big shout of thank you to Tonkin of the Gorge for helping to sponsor our Veterans Day Parade. Because of them, no one had to pay for the entries and allowed them to have that parade in honor along with a flyover that ripped through the skies of over the thing. The sound was rather cool. But I also want to remind you, we have yet another parade just right around the corner, believe it or not, because Thanksgiving is next week. So the 25th Starlight Parade, the deadline to sign up for that is this Friday, the 18th. There is that community tree lighting to follow immediately with lots of hot cocoa cookies, popcorn, of course, Santa. But we love this because we are working with some other agencies. So the Dallas Main Street is going to family night at the Civic right after the tree lighting. They'll be doing all kinds of fun things and cookies and movies and all of that. They'll be there till 9:30 and the downtown of the Dallas is also working on getting businesses to stay open till 8:00 PM. So right after the tree lighting, you could go down for some evening Black Friday specials and support local. So it'll be a family type of event. So and if you want, you can drop your kids off at the Civic because they're watching a fun movie while you go shop. So and then they're going to be gift wrapping at the Civic. So we love it. Our community is all collaborating together for that special event and making a family fun event that night to kick off the Christmas holiday season. And of course, the next day is Shop Small Saturday, but at the Chamber World, it's shop small season. And it started November 1st and it doesn't end until November 1st next year. So keep on supporting local to keep our businesses open. I also want to remind you because it's right around the corner, our distinguished citizens banquet is going to be January 19th. But we need honorees. So the nominations are open for all of those. There's eight categories. I know we all know one. The application is on our website, thedallaschamber.com, right on the front page. You can click nominations. We made it super easy peasy for you. And you can nominate those people and then we'll be announcing those at the banquet, not before. It's the way we do things. And then just want to let you know that even though it were coming into the winter rather quickly, I think we had two weeks of fall. And we hosted Tracy Baird is Wander with Wonder. It's a publication, both it's a digital publication that is really a tourism oriented, mostly a foodie based in Seattle area. And we hosted a travel fam tour, Familiarization Tour with her. And we emphasized the East Gorge Food Trail, which is the Dallas and then Mosher and Duffer. It's kind of just this region. We are on the Travel Oregon site as the East Gorge Food Trail. And then we also kind of emphasized on made local. So we hosted her a week ago on Friday. She came in at noon and she left Saturday evening, but I got her into 12 businesses. So we kept her very busy and you can imagine if you're a foodie, that means you're eating the whole time. So we won't talk about the calorie intake that we did in less than 24 hours. But we were able to get her into 12. She interviewed some local businesses, plus a lot of foods and wineries. And so we will keep you posted on that print date of what's happening. And on that note of my travel writer, I'm going to say a big huge shout, a thank you to the Parks and Rec because we did take them up to the Sarosis Park. And it was beautiful. The grass was just green, a lot better than the grass that we seeded at home. And so it was just really pretty and they were in awe at this park. They could not believe the size of the park and the views from it. So they were there for a while. So yes, we showcased one of our gems that we have in our community and they loved it. So there again, I'll keep you posted as to when they will be having that out for print. Any questions?
Comment. I just like to, I'd like to thank Lisa and her staff for excellent job putting on the parade and the logistics and all the rest of it was covered. And I was just amazed. I don't know what the total number of units was, but it had to be 30 to 40, I'm thinking.
The official actual is like 17, but there's multiple for each entry and it was nice. And Tonkin did the honoring of the different color of cars that you and I talked about as far as the symbolism of those. And they did do that at the beginning of the.
It went very smoothly. The Veterans Home had three units in it. Point Point Man Ministries had three units in it and the Mid Columbia Car Club was there and a lot of individual units. And Mr. Mayor, you gave an award at the parade, which I just heard about today. And maybe you'd like to talk about that for a second?
Yes, the mayor's award for the best float went or best whatever.
Entry. We'll call it an entry.
Went to Dale and Mary Rollins.
Oh, fine.
They're all this, they're, they had a nice, they were given the award as much for their service to the community and to veterans as much as for the exhibit that they.
And what was their exhibit?
It was, it was a fishing boat.
That's fishing for vets. And he's actually had three or four veterans have come up to him and signed up for him to take them fishing.
Yeah. And Dale does that on a regular basis for our veterans. He takes them out fishing. That's what he does besides having served himself. Yeah. So no, I'm glad and you're very welcome. That is one of my heart, heart tugs that we get to do each year. So anyway, if there's no other questions, thank you all. And I hope to see you at Starlight.
I just wanted to point out that of all the awards I've given for the various parades, he was the most appreciative of anyone I've ever seen. I'd like to get a car into the Starlight Parade and I wanted to invite anybody on the council to ride with me. Please let me know.
I'll make a note of that.
Thank you.
Is that a you and I'll talk?
You guys will take care of everything?
Yes, we'll take care of everything.
Good news.
We'll just send you the bill. I'm just kidding. So no, we hope to see you and especially I'm excited for the whole evening. I really am. It is a community evening meant for family fun and kicking off the holidays. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe somebody on Zoom wanted to address the council and if you would unmute yourself and identify your with your name and address, we'd appreciate it. Please proceed. You have up to five minutes.
Dorothy Thompson, Dallas, Oregon. And I'd like to ask some questions about the group that's called Unhoused Committee. So you're talking about housing people that came into the community. My questions are, how long have these people been in the community? Because all of the numbers that I've seen, these are brand new people that we keep calling in like a Pied Piper. The more you give, the more they take, the more they call their buddies and they come in. We've actually seen a huge increase. They're being bussed in, talking to people at Norcore and Police Department. They're seeing a brand new group of people coming in here. And instead of dealing with the community that we already had and all of the issues that came with the people that already lived here, we're now calling new people in and giving them even more and making it even more difficult for the people who live here, including the businesses. You drive anywhere in this town and you cannot find a business that is fully stocked. Why?
Okay, mom, I would have to take exception to some of your statements, but I would like to, I personally would like to talk about it because you're talking about some issues that are near and dear to my heart. So if you would please contact me, I would be happy to discuss this with you either over the phone or in person. Did you have anything you wanted to add? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Who are you?
I'm the mayor, Rich Mays.
You're, you're the mayor. Perfect. What is your phone number? And is there anything that you can tell me today about some of the questions that I had?
No. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the city council for up to five minutes? Okay, thank you. Item seven is city manager's report, Mr. Klebs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of items for you this evening. I wanted to remind the council that we have our goal setting session coming up on November 29th. And our city clerk Izetta has asked to have each of you provide a kind of initial draft brainstorm list of different projects or priorities that you may want to discuss at that council goal setting session. The deadline for that input would be end of day tomorrow. So staff can compile that and get it ready over the subsequent week ahead of the Thanksgiving break. I also want to let the council know that I had a site visit to Norcore last week, organized in partnership with Molly Rogers. I visited the adult and youth side of the Norcore facility. And I thought it was a very worthwhile trip, worthwhile allocation of time. And so I had Izetta reach out as well to the council. We have a couple of dates in the spring. If there's any interest from the council in also conducting a site visit. I'd like to ask our community development director, Josh Chandler, to introduce a new staffer who has joined us recently. And so maybe you can come up to the table here briefly and just give a brief introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Maze, councilors. I'm happy to introduce Brad Mead to our team. He's a new planning tech in our department. Extremely excited to bring him on board. He has a background in botany, actually, but he is really a quick learner. He started last week. Very excited to have him. And he's local. He's been working for Clark County, Clark Public Utilities out of Vancouver. So kind of a commuting there for a while. And now he's able to to finally work in the town that he lives. Very excited to have him with us. And thank you for for the introduction.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. Are you from Vancouver originally?
From Southern Oregon, down in Ashland is where I grew up.
Right.
Well, I've, I've worked all over the state.
Okay. Well, great to have you with us. Thanks very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you. And that, and this will be a practice I'm endeavoring to begin where our new hires will come to the city council meeting and have a brief introduction like that. I think it's a good way to to meet and greet each other in the team that we have here. Also want to let the council know that last week I gave a presentation to the Port of the Dallas Commission as part of our community partner update. And that we had a great turnout for the trick or treat event. And a big thanks to all the departments that participated in the pumpkin carving contest organized by Nubia and some of our other staff here. And thanks to the mayor for being told to judge. I really appreciate that. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Thank you, Mr. Klebs. Okay, we're going to a city council reports. We'll start on my far right with Counselor Long.
Great, thank you. So the Urban Real Agency has not had a meeting in a while. We had just an executive session for some stuff we had to deal with last month and then tomorrow night's regularly scheduled meeting has been canceled for lack of business. The Traffic Safety Committee is meeting on Wednesday morning at 7:00 AM, both in person and on Zoom. And one of the things that I wanted to mention that was in the packet is that there's been request for the addition of a school zone on West 10th Street for the Head Start Sunshine Preschool and also possibly a crosswalk designated for the apartments there because they have people who take their children across to the preschool. So that's one of the things that's on the agenda. Just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you, Counselor Long. Counsel Randall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing to report.
Counsel Runyon?
Nothing to report other than the things I talked about with the parade and so forth, other than I'd say a meeting ahead of me at 2 o'clock on Thursday, the Wasco County Pioneer Association meets at the Discover Center. Anyone who lives in our county and without our county is invited to attend. It's interesting and they do some great things each year with their annual meeting, which comes up in May. So invite anybody who would like to to join us at the Discover Center, 2 o'clock on Thursday.
Thank you, Counsel Runyon. Counsel McGlothlin?
Thank you, Mayor Maze. Nothing to report.
Okay, as far as my report goes, it's already been mentioned about the Halloween pumpkin decoration contest. I did, it was a lot of fun doing that. I think there are like six or seven different city departments that participated. And the administration won first place and finance won second place. And I also attended the Mid Columbia Economic Development District Economic Symposium at the Civic on November the 4th. A radio interview with Mark Bailey on KACI on November the 1st. And I'd also like to congratulate the Dallas High School Cross Country Team for winning the state championship a couple of weekends ago. And a lot of hardworking runners will be honored at our next city council meeting in December. And congratulations. And we're going to get a chance to meet the kids when they come to our next council meeting. And that is it for me. Next is the number nine is the consent agenda. Items of a routine and noncontroversial nature are placed on the consent agenda to allow the city council to spend its time and energy on the important items and issues. Any council may request an item, be pulled from the consent agenda and be considered separately. Items pulled from the consent agenda will be discussed on the agenda at the end of the action items section. Tonight, we only have one item on the consent agenda. It is the approval of the October 24th council meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and the minutes?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a second.
I'll second that.
They move by Counsel Randall and seconded by Counsel Long to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Counsel McGlothlin raised his hand. Thank you very much. Motion passes unanimously. Item 10A, Columbia Gorge Regional Airport Land Lease Rates. Mr. Renard, please identify yourself and.
Hello, Jeff Renard, Columbia Gorge Regional Airport Manager. As you probably see on the staff reports that should be in your packet, the airport's been had some renewed interest in the business park and in the had some renewed interest in the business park and in the uh air lots that we have over there. And as I started going back through previous leases and looking at what we had for land lease rates, I didn't find any consistency that I could answer a question for incoming investors. And I felt that it was important to do a rent analysis at that point and I mean studied the Northwest and looked at typical or airport similar to what we have and came up with anything from twenty to twenty cents to sixty five cents a square foot for an annual lease rate. Um, we established a committee with the airport advisory board. And in the bottom two paragraphs of the staff report, we finally determined that twenty cents a square foot for the airside lots or future hangers and business development joining the taxiways would be an appropriate rate. And for our business park where the flex space building is at and the future business park on Jim Riley Loop Road at thirty cents per square foot annual base. We would factor in a two point six percent um CPI increase annually for those lease rates. Anybody have any questions as to?
Any questions for Mr. Renard? Councilor Long?
Well, I, I think maybe it's just semantics, but um the Consumer Price Index is something specific. So I think what you want to do is factor in an annual increase in the rate without because you're, you're specifying how much. If you're tying it to the CPI, that varies every year and that gets put out by the government, the amount.
Agreed.
Yeah, so, but yeah, thanks.
Actually, in the, one of the things that we looked at on that um in the hangar, the, the T hangar and the existing hangar lease rates this year, we have with the CPI being so high at, I believe, eight point six is where it was at for the last gentleman. The board had agreed that we the airport board had agreed to go with a rolling average of five years uh for the CPI increase, which is where we came up with the two point six.
I think her point is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that under budget implications, you're kind of implying that the rate will go up two point six percent every year. Is that, is that what you're getting at?
That, that is, and also just that um maybe, I mean, obviously, this is not your contract. So in your contract, you need, you don't want to say CPI, but you want to say whatever it is specifically, a rolling average or whatever. But if you're signing a, like a five-year lease, um, that they need to know what that rate is every year, right? Or you're just gonna tell them every year, next year, the rate's gonna be this, because I would think that businesses want to be able to plan for five years what their land cost is gonna be. So I mean, that's a question for you and the airport board, but um, I guess there's some tightening up there that you might want to do to figure out exactly how to word that, to get the result that you want.
I understand what you're I will bring that up. We will have our next airport board meeting will be on the thirteenth of December.
Okay.
Definitely.
And I like that you did the study and that you figured it out. Alright, that's great, because we did, we were in sore need of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I felt it very important to at least have a consistent here's what our land lease rate is for either, either side of the fence on that. And then I guess with my newness in this part of the question, do I make a recommendation to approve the land lease rates with clarification of the increase or?
I would think you'd take it back to the board and then bring it back to us.
My recommendation would be to take it back unless you're trying to sign an agreement right now and need something approved from us to do that.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Kara.
I have some questions for Jeff. That's alright? Jeff. It's my understanding, I was at the airport board meeting when they made this recommendation to have you come present these lease rates to council. These are the same numbers, twenty, twenty cents per square foot for the airside building lots and thirty cents per square foot for the business park, right? These are the same numbers we've talked about. So it seems to me that if the only if the only um hangup here is using the term CPI incorrectly a couple of times, I think that you've delivered the spirit of what the airport board has wanted you to do. And I think that if that's the only thing that we're changing, twenty cents per square foot annually for airside building lots and thirty cents per square foot annually for business park building lots, as well as a CPI increase, whatever the CPI is onward, uh, my, my opinion is, for what it's worth, that we can proceed tonight with a, a motion. But if it, if it's anything different than that, then best practices would probably be to take it back to the board. And so is that your understanding as well? Twenty cents increase for airside building lots?
Yes, the clarification of twenty cents per foot on airside lots and thirty cents per foot. Previously, we had a, a range that was anywhere from ten cents to forty cents.
Right.
They said three different things about what the increase would be. And so it has to be one of those. It's either the CPI, which this year is seven point six, I think, or something like that, or a straight two point six or a rolling average of five years. And I'm just unclear which one we're using.
Miss, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yeah, Mr. Klebs.
Um, so, so Jeff, my understanding is that um there, there are a couple of components here. You have the square footage costs for airside, square footage costs for the business park, and you went through an, an exercise to calculate a flat rate amount of increase per year for the leases going forward. Your methodology for that calculation was to look at the last five years of CPI increases and take the average.
Correct.
And that would be the flat rate. Each new lease we'd enter into would increase each year. And down the road, five, six, seven years down the road, we would do another analysis, potentially using that same methodology to change that percentage increase year over year. So um uh, it's a good question because in the staff report, it does specify the CPI as the, as the increase for these leases, but it is a flat rate of two point six per year for leases moving, going forward.
Right. I
Yes.
Misuse of the CPI. Take that word.
Well, and it's, it's a good question for the, the rolling question as well, but it doesn't sound like that's your intention. Uh, you may do another analysis down the road to adjust that annual increase if necessary.
So question. So, so if two point six is the rolling average, if I were to come in tomorrow and want to sign a contract, would it say in my contract that each year will be two point six for the five years of my contract or am I hearing that incorrectly?
I would say yes.
Okay, that's what needs to be clear. And she has a very good point.
Well, um, it seems to me that we should either um, maybe the city attorney can either um form a um, a motion that we can consider that's consistent with what Jeff has intended. Or we can just ask Jeff to go back and bring it back at the December meeting.
You know, I'm, I'm more than happy to provide some motion language. I defer to council as to whether they want to take the vote. Uh, but I do have a question again for Mr. Renard. Do you think, Jeff, that this should be done tonight? Or do you think it should wait? But I'm curious about what you think.
I don't feel that there's a negative for either direction. If you, if you have a, if you have language to create the motion.
Okay.
Then I would think tonight would be appropriate, or if I need to bring different language back next month, I'm happy to. And I don't have anybody pending that cause a disruption in this.
Does this uh go before the Clickitat County Board of County Commissioners as well?
Yeah.
If so, yes.
When is that meeting?
Not sure. Um, Jake, usually they, they meet every Tuesday.
Yeah.
Well, they may have already passed it for all we know. Right?
I have not presented this to them yet.
Oh, okay.
Our county commissioner, Jacob Anderson, is, is out of town on the commissioners meeting.
Okay.
So I have not had.
Well, if, if, if you haven't presented it to the county yet, um, and, and that needs to happen before anything happens, uh, you know, anything actually happens to these rates. And with the understanding that you don't really see any burning desire to have this done tonight, I think that you could probably put this on the December consent agenda after we clean up the language and I'm happy to help with that.
Appreciate that.
And um, so long as I don't hear any, you know, raging um opposition from council to hear right now, I, I think that this can go on consent probably at the next meeting.
I agree. Anybody have any objection to that?
No, I agree.
Okay, we'll see you in December.
Sorry for the confusion.
It's okay. Okay, item ten B, the Dallas Vision Action Plan two thousand forty. Mr. Chandler.
Good evening, Mayor Mays, councilors. Joshua Chandler, Community Development Department. Um, the last action item on the agenda this evening is for the consideration of the adoption of the Dallas Vision Action Plan two thousand forty. Uh, the Vision Action Plan is updated every ten years, with the most recent version adopted in two thousand and eleven. Uh, for assisting with this project, the city hired Barney and Worth, um, now Consoar, and the project kicked off in the fall of two thousand and twenty one. Uh, we are joined this evening by Aubrey Koenig of Consoar, who will be presenting some slides detailing the process, community outreach, key takeaways from this project. Um, a final draft of the Vision Action Plan has been included in the packet um, and was distributed November fourth to representatives of ten local agencies. Um, upon city council adoption, the plan will be posted to the city's website. And will be a discussion item at the upcoming city council goal session, November twenty ninth. Uh, the initial project scope was budgeted at twenty four thousand three hundred and forty dollars um, with an amendment adding ten thousand seven hundred and fifty five um to the scope. Um, mid, I guess, this summer, that was added uh to the scope for additional outreach with our community stakeholders. Um, and it had an anticipated completion date of November thirtieth, so we are uh on time and on budget, within budget. Um, this evening, staff is recommending adoption of resolution number twenty two dash zero three eight, which is the formal adoption of this plan. And uh finally, following Aubrey's presentation, we'll be able to ask, answer any additional questions. Uh, with that, um, take it away, Aubrey.
Sure. I'm gonna just uh share my screen here. So I'm Aubrey Koenig. Thank you, guys. Uh, it's nice to, to see everybody again and glad for the opportunity to, to share a few slides here. Um, had a chance to, to start this work with Julie Kruger and Alice Cannon and then pick it up uh this spring with um Matthew and with, with Joshua. So I'm just gonna dive in here. Um, the plan that's presented for adoption this evening, it's about ten to eleven pages in, in uh its final form presentation. And the process, of course, was uh city-sponsored to develop the, the action plan. Um, but it is meant to be as much of a community uh plan as possible to have the thumbprints, the, the word choices, the uh community input that we gathered up through many months of, of engagement reflected in uh the content that is part of the, the packet. Um, and that is in both the uh community focus areas and priorities that are included in the plan, as well as the the actions um identified through city and partner input. And that's the work that was mentioned uh this summer and, and fall that we did with a, an additional work session. And it just, as a part of a thank you, um, one of the first pieces of the plan is an acknowledgement of all of the folks who contributed to development along the way and some of those logos of those partner organizations who helped us get the word out to community members um, and who also contributed themselves are represented. They're kind of on the bottom of the um, of the page on the right side of the slide. So cracking the spine on the uh vision plan, just taking a peek inside the document. The intent again was to hear from as many local voices as possible uh and to um go through this process that the, the city undergoes of every ten years, taking a fresh look, updating this content to reflect current views, needs, priorities, interests of your residents, um, business owners and, and others who are part of the community. Midway, uh, and sort of the middle of the page here is a nice process overview. We use this graphic and a couple of other updates that we gave. Uh, so just as a a quick reminder of, of where we came from. Uh, we started in, in fall two thousand and twenty one with some partner interviews and a community survey to collect initial vision ideas. Uh, that turned into a second phase of engagement with a community town hall and another survey to refine and prioritize, prioritize those vision ideas. Um, and then that has culminated in the, the most recent step, which was to connect with uh city and partner organizations to help develop that action path forward. And at the bottom of the page, um, is a key outcome from that engagement, which was to confirm the community focus areas. There were five of them identified. And, and those icons on the bottom of the page are really the organizing framework for the Vision Action Plan in two thousand and forty. Um, shared these info stats before, but just a, a quick snapshot of the iterative process that we went through. Uh, a couple of, of highlights, the um we were able to do Spanish and English throughout the, the phases of community engagement. Um, you know, used again, the the survey on the left uh built into the town hall, um, and that in turn turned into a survey. And so there was a nice uh feedback loop uh that we went through, through each of those phases of engagement. And an outcome again was these five community focus areas, enhancing education, creating economic vitality, providing recreation and open space, strengthening and sustaining community life and improving governance and infrastructure. Um, and the two, all of these were significant to community members, but two that really stood out were uh education and economy. So a, a quick kind of diagram of how to read this content, I just wanted to connect our, our process and the outcomes from that work. So there's a, a page dedicated to each of the community focus areas and the blue items really came out of the community input. So um, enhancing education, in this case, the focus area that was something that we heard from community members as well as the community priorities, the one point one and one point two in the blue font. Um, those were also things that came from the community survey and town hall input. And of course, the representative quotes at the bottom of the page here. Um, you know, good higher education leads to better local business development, for instance, was a part of the uh, the tone of input that we heard from community members related to education. The other part of this plan document is the items in, in bullets. Um, and some of those came from community members, but they were also confirmed through that uh facilitated a work session that we had with uh city staff and, and partner organizations represented um at the end of summer, September timeframe. Uh, and those are sort of the actions to achieve the, the community priorities identified in one point one and one point two. So just to take a quick spin through each of those uh five focus areas. Um, not gonna read everything here, not all of the projects are, are uh represented on the slides. There's more detail in the plan itself. Um, but wanted to just touch on a few of these. So enhancing education was the first focus area. Um, there are really two priorities associated with that one point one. Invest in local school facilities. That's both the built structures as well as the outdoor learning spaces and the, the connection points, um, safe ways to bike and, and walk to school. And one point two, uh internship programs. So those kind of um connection points, the, the ways to connect students and local businesses, those career pathway opportunities. Um, hands-on learning mentorship opportunities was a second priority. An example of one of the supporting projects for one point one, and this is a space, um, you know, many of the items in the plan are places where multiple contributors, organizations could have a hand. Collaboration and partnership projects are a, a key part of this entire document. Um, the example, the bottom of the screen is one where the city could have, I would have a hand in that as well as um, in this case, you know, District Twenty One and Parks and Rec may also have a, a contribution um to achieve this, this project strategy. So and that is partnering on safe routes to schools, including um, you know, school to park connections and safety corridors. So the second uh focus area, creating economic vitality. Two strategies here, two priorities here, um, that came from the community input. One around mixed-use development and rehabbing the building spaces downtown. This is something that was actually, I think, part of the two thousand and thirty plan as well. So there's some, some continuity there. It's still a focus area. Um, but you know, thinking about, are there some funding opportunities, some ways that we can make that um more economical to, you know, fill those storefronts, create housing opportunities, um, and, and encourage that vibrancy uh in the downtown spaces. Two point two, uh raise awareness and add resources to help workers and small businesses succeed. And one of the uh supporting projects related to this would be uh improving the, the Open for Business Guide, so that, that exists right now, but dusting that off, um, updating it, making it current, continuing to promote it. Um, and making sure that it's uh easy to, easy to use and also um appealing for, for businesses to pick up and, and use as a starter kit. And making sure that it's easy to, easy to use and also appealing for, for businesses to pick up and, and use as a starter kit. The third focus area, so providing recreation and open space, green, green spaces are a key part of the. What is considered the distinctive identity of the Dallas across all of the community input, your great weather, you know, the beautiful views, the scenery, the outdoor. Enjoyment that's possible. Two priorities here, one, the first one is really about the destinations, the parks. Maintaining those parks like Xerosis, which was mentioned earlier this evening. The second part is about the trails and pathways that connect those green destinations. And an example project to achieve three point two, coordinating around bus stop improvements with bike and pet improvements to help connect those different hubs in the community. So again, thinking about the networks and. You know, other ways to, to navigate for residents as well as visitors. And enjoy those different parts of the, of the Dallas. And then community focus area four, strengthening and sustaining community. Lisa gave a great update on, you know, a lot of events and so forth that are upcoming here with the holiday season. There's three priorities here, first one, family-friendly community events, pumpkin carving, of course, would fit right in there. As well as, you know, tree lighting and, and other kinds of, kinds of events. Four point two is similar, but a focus here on celebrating heritage and diversity, so cultural events specifically, as much as family-friendly. And then four point three, really looking at the, celebrating the, the stories of the historic landmarks that are part of the Dallas, and I think there's. Maybe a, an app that is about to go live or recently was updated, so a nice accomplishment there, but still some, some opportunities that community members sought to. Continue to celebrate that, that history. And again, just an example of one of the actions, the supporting projects related to four point one would be to. Potentially partner with service groups and high schools to. Recruit event volunteers, and there could be a, you know, acknowledgement of the time spent, so credits for high school students and/or. Some sort of a compensation for service groups who might be dedicating their time to help get those event programs. Up and running and promoted widely. For, for neighbors to enjoy, but also for visitors to the community to enjoy. The last one here, improving governance and infrastructure, so attracting. Merch retail and businesses, you know, a lot of people, when they. Thought about. What they would like to see in the Dallas, they talked about just diversity of places to shop, places to get out and enjoy a meal. You know, from big box things to, to local and mom and pop things, there was that just interest in having more options, both for, for people who live in the community, but also. So they don't have to travel somewhere else to enjoy those things, and also as a way to draw folks into the community. And then five point two, successfully delivering partnership projects, and as I mentioned, this is kind of scattered throughout. The, the document, the plan, but a couple of the key ones that came up through. Input that we gathered along the way were the, the new hospital campus and the youth athletic complex. So places where a few organizations would be in the driving seat to make this happen, and many organizations might benefit and community members might benefit from. The outcomes of that, of that work. And the example project here would be supporting multi-agency social service programs, such as to help address homelessness. So those were the focus areas, the five focus areas. Another key outcome from the conversation with the partner organizations, which was kind of that last leg of the, the process that we went through. Whereas to identify two watershed opportunities. This came out of the, the discussion that day that, you know, along with. Having a, a nice list of those, those five focus areas and supporting actions, that it would be really helpful to acknowledge that there are. Two, two particular areas where there's great potential to have a positive impact and help, impact and help address near-term needs. And those are modern state of the art school facilities, a desire to. You know, address the, the high school. Through a bond to, to improve those facilities, but also other local school facilities. And then the second one, attainable affordable housing options, and let me just skip here, so it's a little more legible what those parts of the story are there. So the potential strategies were things that were discussed with partner organizations, not exhaustive. Many of these strategies are big topics, they're things that involve many, could involve many organizations and could be, you know, long-term things to. To tackle, but there are things that have great potential for positive impact, so we wanted to identify, as a group, wanted to identify those watershed opportunities. So an example strategy, for instance, related to the schools would be supporting a get out the vote promotion when that bond comes around in, I think, two thousand twenty-three. And with that, just wanted to. Mention again, so the look forward, the idea here, assuming adopting this vision action plan, the idea would be to publish the. Ten eleven page PDF, make that available through the city's website, have a page that has a summary version of, of this work that you guys go through every ten years and. Highlights the outcomes from these conversations. And also, an intent to use this plan potentially in the upcoming goal setting session that, that council has. Later this month. So I'm gonna stop sharing, and I'm gonna turn it back over to Josh.
Great, thank you, Aubrey. And with that, we conclude our presentation and I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the staff?
Well done.
It seems to be consistent with. Everything that I was involved with, the three, well, all of us were involved with. Three. The surveys and the, the town hall, so. Excellent job. Okay, I guess if nobody has any other questions or comments, we could entertain a motion to pass the resolution.
I'll move to adopt resolution number two-two dash zero three eight, adopting the Dow's Vision Action Plan two thousand forty.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's removed by Council Randall and seconded by Council Long to approve the resolution adopting the Dow's Action Plan two thousand forty. Is there any more discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or raise your hand. Council McGlothlin has raised his hand, motion passes unanimously, very important. Document here that's gonna pave the way for the next twenty years. Thank you very much, Josh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aubrey. Okay. Okay, the city council of the city of the Dells will now meet in an executive session in accordance with ORS one ninety-two dot six six zero two H. To consult with council regarding the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session concerning pending litigation. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to record or report. On any of the discussions or deliberations during the executive session. Except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No session may be made in exec, no decision may be made in, in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room or via Zoom. We anticipate the executive session will take approximately thirty minutes. So with that. I'm adjourning this, this portion of the meeting and we'll now go to the executive. Did I do something wrong? We'll now go into executive session.